America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for showing up. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Commissioner Weeding?
Here.
Commissioner Walsh?
Here.
Commissioner Michael?
Here.
Mayor Lyons?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, public comment. If you have a public comment, come out, state your full name and spell your last name. Section two dash thirty-four of Braywood Code of Ordinance imposes a three-minute limit for each person during public comment. So you get three minutes.
Three minutes, sixteen seconds, that's all I need. Denise Markin, I'm here on behalf of the Braywood Area Health and Community Coalition, located at four sixty-five East Reed Street. Denise Markin, we still have more than one hour, do you have any? I'm just announcing that we are having our community garden planting day this Saturday from ten a.m. to two p.m. We have all the plants bought. All we need is just the people to help. You'll see there are all out there right now filled with dirt, but please. And then we are also going to have Kaz's Corner Food Truck on process. So anybody can come out, that'd be great. Buyers are over there on the table.
So if we come out and help, are you buying the Spanish burgers?
No, sir.
Anybody else in public comment?
They recharged a lot of the O L A T T O for the Braywood Lines Club. Just wanted to give a quick recap of the Route sixty-six Red Carpet Corridor Festival that took place at the beginning of this month. Overall, we had over about seven hundred people stop by coming through town. And Saturday, obviously, was a pretty good day for everyone. Sunday, not so much. Cold, windy, and rainy, so that kind of put a damp run on things. But like I said, we had quite a few visitors coming through. In our guestbook that we had folks sign when they come to get the giveaway, we had folks from the United States, all over from California. We had some from Maine, Texas, Florida, and Oregon. We also had quite a few from other countries as well. There's one from Czechoslovakia, Germany, Poland, the U.K., France, and also from Australia. So we would like to thank all the volunteers who helped to put it together, get it set up and arranged, and also the city crews for helping to get the park out there, Route sixty-six Visitor Park, all looking good and ready to go over and get back. Next year, obviously, in twenty twenty-six, is the Route sixty-six one hundred year centennial. So there's going to be a lot of things going on throughout the year nationwide, throughout the state and such. So I'm predicting next year to be quite a busy year. It's one of the things where when folks do the trip along Route sixty-six all the way from Chicago to California, you know, they stop at these different spots along the route. Obviously, Braywood's biggest identity right on Route sixty-six is right there by the Pokoda, you know, the zoo, that area there. So we're looking forward to that next year, seeing a lot more tourists coming through town, kind of take a look as they're making their trip down all the way along the route. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? One once, one twice, propose public comment. Okay, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the Monday meeting. This is a special meeting. It was on April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that one, too.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, reports by city officials.
There's a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I need a motion to approve minutes on Monday. Special meeting was on May fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so reports by city official. I need a motion, request for motion for ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three, approving the authorization, the execution of settlement release agreement between the city of Braywood and Linda Minor. Beforehand, a motion, do you want to explain anything on this topic at all?
Sure. So this was a, Ms. Minor filed a complaint against the city back in August of two thousand twenty-one with the Illinois Department of Human Rights alleging failure of recall. We proceeded to a mediation conference sometime in April, and the settlement agreement is as a result of that mediation conference. So the parties are looking to settle the dispute with the dismissal of the charge in exchange for the agreements that are contained in this stuff.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we're still on reports. I just kind of want to update everybody on the economic development updates. So I did speak with Ellie DeRozio from Ford, DeRozio. She invited me that they could be actually breaking around within a couple of weeks. There's just a couple small things that they got to approve through corporation or corporate, so they should be good to go. So she, I talked to her a few days ago, and she seemed pretty confident they could be as soon as two weeks. And I touched base with, you know, just the new mayor, and I'm acting city administrator. I touched base with Darren Bauer. I called him to make sure that we had, if anything, that he didn't even from our end, and he was good to go. So I talked to Darren, and then I contacted the Mastodon truck, introduced myself to kind of get a progress on what's going on with the Mastodon truck stop. As you drive by there, it's a high-traffic area, so there hasn't been a lot of activity going on. So I was concerned with that. And then he told me that he's went to communication with his engineers and our engineers, and everything's moving forward. Now, it's just, it's an I dot situation. They have to make some improvements on the roadway and in the intersection. And I guess there's going to be a decision when those are going to put some lights there. Do you have any more to add to the, I mean, you sent an email on that, so you might have some more information.
Yeah, I just, I've reached out to David Maston. Again, they're still planning to install the signals. They're just courting with I dot, working to figure out what they want to do, whether it's a split phase or whether they have to realign the road and get them right away. So it's kind of really between them and I dot at this point in time.
Yeah, you seem to think that they were going to try to start breaking around, continue on in about, about two months, you thought the time for it.
Correct. Yeah, they still like to continue moving their site and actually get operational this year. It's because it's a matter of timing with I dot and whether I dot will allow them to go ahead with a stop, full stop control in that area.
So based on your experience, do you think they'll put like a temporary light up first, or will they come in and put the permanent stoplight?
It would be, if they do it, it'll be, it'll be a temporary lights to go first because they can get those done a lot faster.
Yeah.
And there's some other road improvements that have to be done first beyond that. But we're still waiting to hear back, formal response from I dot. I dot reached out to their engineer and said that we need a full set of plans before we can really comment on the next steps every month. So definitely the developers can expect.
Okay, another topic that's kind of going around town is this data center. We had a meeting scheduled for tonight. They said that they weren't in a position to give us an update that they were in the process of acquiring more land. I don't have any, any more information on that. I've reached out to a couple of different mayors and city administrators, so if anybody's interested, you know, in going up there and doing a tour and kind of get some more information instead of picking, you know, picking their brains and their complaints, I guess. When I talked to, actually, I talked to my task as chief of police. He said that it's been up and running for three years, and I had one police call in three years. I talked to their city administrator, I caught them and the mayor coming back from Springfield. They had a nice conversation. They said that they would line up a tour of the facility. Obviously, we can't go in there for security reasons, but we can tour the perimeter and see what it looks like and pick their brain if we have any questions about the data center they had built. So that's just where we're at right now with the data center. Hopefully, they're here at our next meeting. I'm still waiting to hear back from them. I don't know if you've heard anything back from them or anything on it.
Nothing in addition.
Okay. Also, I'd be everybody on the city administrator. We, you know, if we go through a process, I've interviewed several different city administrators, so hopefully we'll have something finalized by the next meeting. As far as the chief of police, kind of going through some resumes, there's going to be, I think the interviews are going to be the first week of June. Nine different candidates will be interviewed. One will be an internal candidate. The interviews are going to be done by three chief of police from other community, and then what I'm looking forward, then to narrow it down to three or four, and then we'll come back and I'll bring that back to the council, and then we'll make a decision out of the final three. So that again, those interviews, that should be done in the first week of June, those interviews. Do you have any questions on that stuff? This question? Okay. That's all. That was kind of the administrative report, sir.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Okay. Engineer?
Nothing to report.
Okay, city attorney?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
I report my commissioners, so we're council and finance.
I need a motion to approve payment of bills in five hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Are you making that one?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. And included in here is our EPA, our six-month EPA, which is three hundred and sixty-eight or twenty-eight? Is it sixty-eight?
I don't know that exactly. I just know it's three fifty and some change.
Yeah. So that's coming out of there. And so that is why the bills are so high this time.
It's three fifty-two forty-two oh nine.
So actually, it will only be about two hundred, that's it.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need, I will make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of, should we not add this up? Payroll journal for the amount of eighty-seven thousand one hundred and nine dollars and nine cents, stipend and sick pay out for sergeants in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-six cents, and the payroll journal final check for four hundred and seventy-five, fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents, and payroll journal for the amount of eighty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to streets of public improvements.
Yes. I have a motion to approve the final pay request number two to P.T. Farrow in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and nine dollars and nineteen cents. It's the remainder of the project at South Division Street and North English. So two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred, a little over two hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred was paid already, and the balance due was twelve, a little over, this twelve thousand, number.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this next one is a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash five for the rebuild Illinois Bonds Fund Resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. This is Sean, you might, if you want to help with this.
I certainly can. I can explain it. Back in, I'm trying to remember the date, twenty twenty-one, someone in that area, the state of Illinois issued, went out for bond funds, essentially for infrastructure improvements. They did a big capital plan, and part of that money was basically distributed to different communities, the high-income growth and different allotments. They also took a chunk of that money, the bond fund, and they basically said each community based on population gets a certain percentage of dollars. That money is to be used for, essentially for more of long-term construction projects. They, they basically came back saying you could use for rebuild, you know, reconstruction projects, anything structural, anything that's, can be technically bondable over a fifteen-year period. So what we're doing is, those funds now have been, we already said, explained what was going to happen, how those funds are going to be used for construction. There is a threshold, there's a timeline date for July first of two thousand twenty-five. At that point in time, essentially, the funds have to be obligated, otherwise they get lost. The village received, or the city received four hundred and eight thousand dollars, four hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and eight thousand eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. They previously obligated sixty thousand for engineering improvements for the Division Street, E.C. Street widening. This just appropriates the balance of those funds, so we don't lose them. This and the next resolution are essentially, will obligate those funds. Plan, design plans are at I dot right now being reviewed, so later on, we can actually go to construction with this. We just don't want to lose the money that's been provided to the city.
Because of the time frame.
Correct, exactly. We still just, we still have to go through I dot's review process, so early in the study, we just made that the city would hear the ability to construct the industry improvements, probably later this year, could be later this year, possibly carrying into next year. But this is just blocking those funds, so we're not going to lose those funds.
Sean, I, I thought before with the E.C. Street development that that would be part of their, their infrastructure, but...
They're doing, they're doing a portion of it. There's a lot of things happening in that corner. The developer is obligated to actually widen E.C. Street going west. This is essentially at the throat where we actually have, we have turn lanes left and right, going in and out essentially of E.C. Street, and then you're also going to have a turn lane coming out of E.C. Street going north. So all those improvements will be part of the Division Street widening, which is basically the I dot project we're doing right now. The developer later on, when they come in phase two, the first phase they're doing right now is they're going to masquerade the whole site development basically for the two car dealers, and then also the lot right there at the corner, southwest corner of E.C. Street and Division Street. Later on, they're going to come, they still got thirty-five acres they have to subdivide yet to build. When that gets done, they're going to finish the rest of the widening of E.C. Street, when there's enough traffic out that justifies it. So a lot of things are happening. They're paying a portion of it. We're also looking at, you know, trying to pick up the rest of the cost with the developer to the east, which is looking at annexing as well. So a lot of moving parts on this side.
Okay. I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
I'll abstain for a minute.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last thing is a motion to approve the request for expenditure authorization of MFT or motor fuel tax funds, E.L.R. dash nine zero nine one five zero, for the R.B.I. funds for the Division Street widening.
And again, this is, we bill the one. This is another one that I'd asked for as well, saying, you've already had an appropriation resolution to appropriate the funds for your design. You also, you just did an appropriation for the balance you're going to obligate for construction. There's a separate form that they need that basically ties it all together and says, here's your total allotment of your rock to be the one that funds, so they can put it in the files. So that's, that's what this is.
So it's a formality that we have, you have to do this to release, get the funds you can release at a later date?
Yes, Division One reached out to everybody and said, by the way, don't forget this last one, this last one for us all.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, home building property. You got for us? Anything good?
There's a lot going on. These guys stay real busy, but just, George was nice enough to kind of put some notes together, say, and let everybody know what they're doing. This is from four twenty-one, twenty-five, five twelve, twenty-five. And him and his assistant, Brody, did fifty-two old gates. And I imagine that has to do with the surf and that whole stuff we got going around town. Ten water shutouts, doing the muffin water reeds, helped street department with the pipe project down West Eureka Street and West Main Street, fixed the flag service city hall, and seven sewer inspections. They went out, weeded it around all fire hydrants, helped the street department get salt spreaders off the big trucks and the low trucks for the year from summer. Five final reads, two B-box locates, fought four water meter replacements, and found and plotted one hundred and five B-boxes on subsurface maps, measured and plotted seventy-five sewer on subsurface maps. What that means is, realize too, when they're, they're finding and plating the subsurface maps, once they locate them, now it becomes documented, and it's in these subsurface maps. So if they go out there in the middle of winter, they can hit their G, GMS, GPS, and know exactly where that picture is. So the guys have always stayed busy, but it's kind of a list of what they've done the last couple of weeks. That's all I have there.
All right, good, good. Hey Moose, public health, safety, what's that place from doing these days?
I've got a couple things here. From April twenty-second to May twelfth, we had total number of calls and service, or service reported, sixty-two. We had forty-five case reports. We had total of subject arrested were three, total arrest charges were five, total of traffic stops was one hundred and thirty-one citations. We issued out thirty-three written warnings for eighty-two. We had four semi-truck violations, and total number of P tickets were twelve. And we had a couple new hires. On April twenty-third, we had two, a young gentleman and a young lady, graduated from police academy, U of I in Champaign. The first officer was Joshua Michael. He graduated from Coal City High School. While attending, he participated in football for four years, basketball for three years, and track and field for three years. He participated in his G.A.V.C. course criminal justice after graduating high school. Officer Michael worked at Public Pontiac Correctional Center as a correctional officer during that time. He was also a member of a T.R.T. tactical response team. And the other officer, Michelle Potter, graduated from Reed Custer High School. While attending, she competed in track and field all four years and held some school records. She won honor, her bachelor's degree, and exercised science from Howabett Nazareth University. Since graduating, she has worked as a personal trainer and gained experience in corporate management. And that's all I have there.
Also, again, I mentioned two. This Friday is coming rough. So, Duncan, it's a great cause, it's a great event. It's fun. It's here, makes you go out there and donate, participate. It's here, also, we team up with Wilmington Police Department, and Officer Brady will be out there. So it's a nice event. So again, just mark that on your calendars. It's Friday, right?
I didn't have the paper ready. I'm trying to make an appointment about the blood drive.
I'm sorry, what?
About the blood drive? I don't have the paper ready. I'm trying to make that up.
Oh, yeah, I don't know the date, but I don't know.
It's June eighteenth.
You have to keep the blood drive.
So the blood drive's on Wednesday, June eighteenth. It's from two to six p.m. here in the council chambers. If anyone wants to donate, they can go online. We have our link on the Facebook page and on the city website. Pre-register, pre-registration is highly encouraged. Last one, we actually, I took a waiting about forty-five minutes for walking because the pre-registrations were, were, were filled.
Okay.
So highly recommend pre-register.
So go on the link, pre-register. Okay, and you have a time slot. That's good. That's nice. All right. That's it. Planning and zoning. What do you got for us?
Planning and zoning, Commissioner Ben, on May fifth, we have two, two items on the agenda. The first one was a map amendment for vacant lots on South Front Street. This is in regard to rezoning pin number zero-two-two-four-zero-eight-four-one-four-zero-two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero, and zero-two-two-four-zero-eight-four-one-four-zero-two-one-zero-zero-zero-zero. From R one to B one. What these two lots are, they are the east and west parking areas behind the Golden Mine Restaurant. The building is a third pin number. That is already been B one for quite some time, but the parking lots are still residential. The owner of the property is Municipal Bank in Burbane. The managers, Ishmel, are Droule. This is probably something that should have been corrected sooner. There will be no ill effects on any neighbors, no ill effects on the community. The plant commission approved this map amendment and recommends to the city council to approve ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-four.
So they're existing parking lots were just going from residential, but isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I took a drive there. So it's the ones like directly behind it, and it's the ones offset to the right to the east, right?
They're, well, they're, the restaurant itself is right on Front Street.
Yeah.
It has its own pin number. The other two pin numbers are behind the building. One's close to the side street, and one's, one's to the east and one to the west, behind the building.
Okay.
George, did you get any plans for other buildings or any of those?
Not, not at the, not at the time being, no.
Yeah, he was asking at the meeting. He didn't say there was any plans for it. Okay, so...
I'll request a motion for ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-four regarding a map amendment to vacant parking lots. South Front Street, Braywood, located behind the Golden Mine Paying the Restaurant, will carry pin numbers zero-two-two-zero-eight-four-one-four-zero-two-seven-zero-zero-zero,
You can stop there. That last one is just informational.
There's my motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the second item we had on the agenda was a, the city, under the city Code of Ordinances, section twenty-three dash nine concerning accessory buildings and uses. There are two sections we looked at at this ordinance. We looked at twenty-nine dash nine A concerning the number of accessory structures that can be on a property. The commission approved an ordinance to read, "No property shall be permitted to have more than two accessory structures on the property with the principal building." Our recommendation to the city council is to approve this amendment to section twenty-three dash nine A. We also looked at twenty-three dash nine D concerning the height of an accessory building. The plant commission voted to approve the ordinance amendment to section twenty-three dash nine D to state, "No accessory building shall exceed eighteen feet in height, with the condition of a garage can be eighteen feet, and any other accessory building cannot exceed fifteen feet." Our recommendation to the council is to approve these two changes on section twenty-three dash nine under ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-five.
George, you said, um, this eighteen feet only pertains to garages?
Pardon me?
The eighteen feet only pertains to garages?
That's, that's what we looked at.
That's not what this says. It says no accessory building.
That's different than what we, we put forward. You, you, your ordinance is, what was given to you is different than what we, we brought up and talked about.
So this means any shed could have an eighteen foot?
So won't it, you're going to vote on your ordinance?
Okay.
Which is, okay, that's the reason you're here.
So, real quick, eighteen-foot max, no more garages, accessories, no, where does the fifteen-foot factor?
Well, what, what, what we discussed was fifteen foot for like a shed.
Okay.
Or a different accessory building. The public discussed it, and then we discussed it. There was some people that build garage and they say, well, when it's, it's under construction, it's so easy to build a large garage. The height change is compatible with the... Uh, the height change is compatible with, uh, uh, Wilmington, Wilmington, you can build a garage as tall as your house.
Okay.
So you've got a two-story house, you could build a very tall, uh, garage.
Okay, so now I ask my question, Brian, why did it go in this way?
I think that's the way that it was originally proposed, uh, is the ordinance that you have in front of you. So what you can do is approve as is, or you can approve as recommended by the zoning board and we can make that amendment to the ordinance. So it's up, upper councils discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, motion for ordinance twenty-five forty-five, approving amendments in twenty-three nine. I think it's fair, and similar to other communities.
Do you want that motion to include, so as written, as was proposed to council, is that all accessory structures can be up to eighteen feet?
Yes.
Do you want it that?
Yes.
So if you build an additional garage or additional shed, it can go to eighteen feet in your backyard?
Yeah, correct.
That's not what we talked about, though.
No, that wasn't, that's why I asked the question.
We, we discuss it different, but that's what, yeah. Uh, the city put in the ordinance eighteen feet.
It was eighteen for garages and fifteen for sheds.
Yeah, that's what, that, yeah.
Talking with some of the contractors, developers too, if you do fifteen, and I see their point, fifteen puts a lower pitch on the growth. If you do eighteen, the pitch will match, most of the time, match their own pitch of their own house.
That's fine.
For your garage, yeah. I think you're talking about an accessory shed.
Yeah, no, I understand both sizes of it for an accessory shed or a garage. But like I said, a lot of people want that same peak on their accessory buildings as well as their house. Whether it's a shed or a garage, that's all I'm interested in.
George, wasn't there a discussion about building a room up there too that, that was not to be allowed?
Yeah.
That would be.
Like a dormer?
Uh, what we brought up was this storage area upon new construction, so easier to build it taller. So you have much more storage in the, in your rafters and the garage.
Didn't you put it through with the proposition of nobody could live up there?
No.
I thought that was.
No, that would, uh.
That's probably earlier.
That, that would have to go through the city when they, uh, get permits to build their thing. Uh, there are, uh, there, I know of two homes in Braywood that people live above the garages and it's legal, Minnesota. It can happen, but it would have to be approved when they're building the, kind of like, case by case, yeah.
I think there's a, I think there's a building code regulation, the International Residential Code, that employers and all living quarters have. Essentially, when a house has, you know, plumbing, kitchen, so I don't, there may be a situation where someone can reside above their garage, but you need to meet certain factors. Um, specifically, I don't know if there's anything that prohibits, you know, an above garage apartment. So we made, uh, so the motion that you made right now was for eighteen feet?
Yes.
Generally for an accessory structure.
Correct. That would be.
After all, all the laws.
All accessory structures, detached garage sheds.
So if you had a, if your garage was fifteen, can you have taller on the accessory building in the back?
Uh, if it's, and it's an attached garage, I guess in both scenarios, yes, detached or unattached, because you've got two structures.
And then again, if they got a fifteen-foot garage, they might want to see what a fifteen-foot roof to match the pitch of their block.
That's what I'm saying, we want to make sure that this, that eighteen doesn't happen on that whole outlook. We want to make sure there's some continuity in our community.
Sorry to interrupt, but isn't there a ready and ordinance stating nobody can live above?
Yeah, you just said that, yeah.
Would you like to think?
Brian just said.
I was, yeah, I was asking. I didn't hear in the back of the room.
That's why she was saying it.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
No.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, our, our next planning and zoning may to be announced. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, old business. We have the old business. Old business. Going once, new business. Anybody want to talk about new business? Anything? Liz?
No.
Okay, no new business. Executive session, anybody interested in executive session? Going once, going twice? All right. Uh, our next city meeting is gonna be Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, um, at seven o'clock. Go ahead and motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Commissioner Weeding?
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Mayor Lyons?
Yes.
We have adjourned.